Twenty twenty five will now come to order. Roll call.
Michael Belizia?
Here.
Vincent Cutterford?
Here.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Here.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Here.
And Norman Ritchie?
Here. Next is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, we are asking for your blessings and guidance throughout this meeting, and that we may honor one another by keeping an open mind. May be voiced our truth and lesson with an open heart, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September twenty second. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Joe Seibert, seconded by Teresa DeAndrea. All those in favor say aye.
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 Prove. Next item is treasurer's report. Anybody have any questions? Okay, there's no questions. We need a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion, I approve the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Joe Seibert, seconded by Jeff Miller. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose. Aye, say aye. Next item. Approval of the bills. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. On October sixteenth, under building, ceiling heater door handle thirteen hundred forty-five dollars.
I'm sorry, your date was that?
Uh, October sixteen.
Sixteenth.
I'm sorry, you would.
Underbuilding, administration buildings the next header and then it's the first item.
Underbuilding, right there.
Oh. Yes. The ceiling heater was, goes into the holding cell area. In there, and then, uh, what they're saying on door handle, actually, the items that hold the door open, we had to order some more, they were broken.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
There's some multiple charges, uh, under unsolved, under the bills paid for October sixteenth, code red, six hundred ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. It's on a couple departments.
Code red? No, that's our.
That's our call system, emergency call.
That's the emergency call system, snow bands, so on.
Is that a yearly ticket?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Here I have one from, from October ninth and the sixteenth. Uh, both for Keystone Tech. One I know was just maintenance, but the other one was for, like, over six thousand dollars. I believe that one was on the sixteenth.
Yeah, those were all the updates. Six thousand, yeah?
Those are multiple.
Yeah, that was all the updates. Uh, bringing us up from eleven, from ten, to Windows eleven, and plus updating, uh, any security or whatever else we had to bring up to date in our servers too.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have one more. Just on the, uh, October twenty-third under the sewer, um, the utilities for the plant came at like ten thousand dollars. That's, I guess, I'm assuming that's the impact of the electric increases and such that, that we're
Exactly.
dealing itself.
Yeah.
Cause that used to be, if I'm not mistaken, we've seen past bills like seven thousand or so.
Correct, we usually ran around seven thousand dollars. Now we're up to ten.
Any other questions? Okay, we need a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion, we paid the bills from October.
I'll second it.
Okay, first by Mike Belizia, seconded by Joe Seibert. Roll call.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, next item. Other items of concern. Is there anything from council? Anything from the public?
I have one thing. Uh, as you know me. All of you should know me, my name's John Fermanchen. I've been employed by the borough since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been a devoted employee to the borough. I love my job, I love this town. It was brought to my attention on Friday afternoon that you guys may be voting on the pension, and that I may either be voted out of the pension or have to pay around eighteen thousand dollars to stay in the pension.
John, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
If you don't mind, if you would come into the executive session, we can go over this with you.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Anything else from the public? Okay, we're gonna go into, uh, first item of business. Proclamation for former chief of police Brian Mark Koch. Yeah.
I mean, oh, from.
Oh, from, yeah, cause I gotta take his picture.
Okay. The Borough of Wesleyly proclamation. In recognition, of Police Chief Brian Mark Koch, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Brian Mark Koch has been a member of the Wesleyly Police Department for thirty-one years, and chief of police for sixteen years of this time. And whereas, Chief Mark Koch has been instrumental in the development of the police department from a small town department to a department that has been recognized for its achievements and professionalism. And whereas, through his leadership, the department was among the first in the region to provide officers with technology and equipment to advance their policing to better protect and serve the community. And whereas, Wesleyly Borough Council acknowledges and admires the excellence and outstanding achievements Chief Mark Koch has accomplished while chief of police, and recognizes the countless powers of his selflessness dedicated to the department and the residents of Wesleyly. Now, therefore, they have resolved, I, Norman Ritchie, the mayor of Wesleyly, Pennsylvania, has hereby acknowledged and commend Chief Brian Mark Koch for providing thirty-one years of dedicated service to the Borough of Wesleyly. And whereas, this twenty-seventh day of October in the year of the Lord, twenty thousand twenty-five. On behalf of Wesleyly Borough, Borough Council, present this retired Wesleyly Police Chief.
I'm gonna ask you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business. Gratification of appointment of Michael Bogart as Police Chief by Borough Manager on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Anybody have any questions? Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to accept the ratification. I make a motion, we accept the ratification of Michael Bogart becoming the police chief.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first by Mike Belizia, seconded by Joe Seibert. Roll call.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Next item.
Congratulations, Bogart, have good luck.
That's a classic.
Yep.
Next item of business. Chief Bogart will speak about asking for the public's help in reporting incidents. Chief Bogart?
Well, I was gonna thank Bry, but of course, typical Bry fashion, he ran out the door, so. But I'll thank him anyway, so. Again, he's, I've been with him my whole career, he basically, I'm standing here because of that guy right there, so. Can't say enough good things about him. Um, he deserves a lot more credit than what we give him, so. He's definitely gonna be missed. So, I know that wasn't on the agenda, but. So, we're gonna talk real quickly about, um, people calling the police department when things are actually happening. We have an uptick in people posting things on Facebook and not reporting it directly to the police department, or waiting a day to call, uh, and reporting issues. So, we're asking everybody, I'm asking everybody, the department's asking everybody to, if there's an issue, an emergency issue, call nine-one-one. Don't just call the station. If it's a time-sensitive or emergency, call nine-one-one. Um, if it's something that can wait, you call our, our non-emergency number. But, we're just having a problem with people posting stuff and people waiting a day or two days on, on major stuff like frauds and burglaries and assaults that it's kinda, it's hard to, we're starting from behind the eight ball, we're losing like twenty-four, forty-eight hours on, uh, on investigations, so. Anybody have any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business. Approval for a petition to vacate Blakesley Street, Walnut Alley, and Seventh Street. Harold, you want to explain?
Yes, we had received this petition, uh, for the borough to vacate these paper streets. However, generally, the practice has been, where we're looking, if you look at the map, you see on Blakesley Street, all of them, all the, uh, individuals, Mr. Hauser, Mr. Tyrone, Watson, and the school district, all border on Blakesley, and it pretty, it covers the whole street, and we're also on Blakesley too, our property is there. And Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, where they're looking for Walnut Alley and, uh, part of Seventh Street, we generally like that whole section being.
Typically, you go from street to street. So, if there's an alley, you go from street to street. In this case, it looks like it should go from Fell to Blakesley, and it only goes for a small portion, and then on the other side, I'm not even sure what that next street would be.
Seventh.
But, is that Seventh?
Yes, that's Seventh. The next one to the right, next to Watson.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I'm just looking at the top. But in any case, yeah, it doesn't, it does not include the whole block, so you'd be vacating part of the street. And a lot of times, that's true, part, but if it's not between two other established streets, so typically, that's what's done. And I, and I think if you want that to be done, then some other people are gonna have to sign this petition as well.
Right, but as far as Blakesley looks, that one, they could go with.
Blakesley, you could, and I'm looking at it, Harold, if you look, you are all looking at the map, you see what's outlined in yellow, but the last one to the, that last to the right, I think across from that, it says W A S D, but on the last one to the right, I'm not sure who owns that.
We do.
Do we? Oh, okay.
The farthest one to the right, borough.
Okay, so, yeah, so Blakesley would be fine. It's Walnut and Seventh that you'd have issues with.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Seven.
Will we be losing liquid fuel running with that?
No, no, they're unopened streets. They're, they're just paper streets. So, Jim, would you recommend that, uh, we send a letter to them stating that, yes, we could go ahead with Blakesley, however, the other streets?
But the other ones, we can't unless they get their neighbors to go along with them.
Right, okay.
Is that what council would like us to do? I'm gonna ask a question. Basically, what's, what's driving this petition? What, 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 what's the goal? What?
They're all just looking to gain that half of road, or half of alley.
It's just a street, it, uh, it's not, it's not really a street. It, if you went over there, then maybe.
It's nothing there, right.
Nothing there. And so, and so, basically, what they're saying is, by vacating it, they're hoping that they can get, you know, maybe put a fence down the middle, or somehow use more of that property. Typically, after you vacate it, you then deed it, ha, to each side, to each adjoining property owner to the middle of the street.
At whose expense?
At theirs.
Theirs.
So that the cost to the borough for this transaction is zero.
Should be zero, yeah. Yeah, that's, when these things come in, that would have been part of the response is, yes, if you're willing to do it, it's just like on Blakesley. If, if all they said was Blakesley, so that's fine. However, you're gonna have to pay for the expense of doing so. And I know in other municipalities, what we do is say, well, give us a thousand dollars down. Now, we have Times News and other places, so it's a lot more expensive. But there's an expensive advertising, it's, cause you have, actually have to adopt an ordinance to do this. So, there's preparation of an ordinance, advertising it, adopting it, and then going through deeding the parcels to each adjoining property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Does the borough need any right-of-way in, uh, any of those properties?
No, not on, for Blakesley Street.
How about the other two on Seventh and Walnut Alley?
I would.
I would assume the answer is no, cause if, if we had anything there, we'd say absolutely not anyway. Even if you had stormwater drains there, you'd say no.
Anybody else have any questions?
Then we need to make a motion to contact the other homeowners?
Well, it wouldn't be to contact the homeowners, it would be contact the petitioners to say exactly what Harold verbalized, that is, we would, could do Blakesley, we can't do the other two unless the others, the adjoiners are the other property owners joining this petition. And secondly, and it will be at your expense.
I make a motion, then, that we ask the folks to contact their neighbors and see if they wish to proceed.
So, your motion is really to authorize the borough manager to write a letter to what we just said we're gonna do?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll second it.
You didn't even try to repeat the motion.
I'm not.
Lori has.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mike Belizia, seconded by Joe Seibert. Roll call.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, the next item of business is an update on the Arena Park project, Hudsondale Street project, Trail project, and the Briar Lane water issue project. I had contacted Tracy, and she put a PowerPoint presentation together. Hopefully, it works.
Okay. So far, so good. Came up in the back. All right. So, we're, the Arena Park project, uh, we, by the order of the grant, we have to post-assign funding assistance that's been provided by DCNR, Bureau of Recreation and Conservation, Keystone Recreation, Park and Conservation Fund, and the Pasco Schiavo Memorial Fund of the Luzern Foundation, had all contributed to this project. Here, what we're looking at is where the roller blade rink used to be. We had removed all the fill that had been in there, and the contractor is bringing in new fill. It actually, uh, took a hundred truckloads of fill to, and they're still bringing them in. And here's, uh, just another shot from different angles, uh, showing the area. We had run our conduit across, uh, this area for lighting, for the, uh, volley, yeah, volleyball, for the pickleball and basketball courts. And again, another shot. Here, we're showing the sidewalks, these are all ADA sidewalks, uh, going to the future basketball and pickleball courts. Uh, noticed they're all in concrete. Uh, and that was done primarily because the contractor felt that trying to do it in asphalt would be more labor-intensive as opposed to doing it in concrete. Just another shot of the ADA sidewalks. Now, when we say ADA, it's gonna be ADA from the parking lot, across Third Street, where you see the ADA access in Third Street to the parking lot area, and then up to the courts. And you may have noticed that that Third Street has been closed the past few days, uh, in order to have this type of, this work done. And there's just some shots going, looking up Edie Avenue, where the, uh, concrete sidewalks come down Edie Avenue, and would eventually cross, you know, there on, uh, Third Street. To be completed, uh, the paving will be done this week, hopefully, weather permitting. And, uh, in spring, we're looking to work on the, uh, the benchell area, you know, before the benches are placed, and also, we're gonna be in the process of writing another grant to get the fencing up. Based on the way the prices had come in for this project, the fencing was just, uh, astronomically high compared to what, you know, we had gotten original prices on. And, and just to bring you up to date, or whatever, this was a three-year grant. And because it was a federal grant, and it was kind of the first type, uh, that DCNR had worked with, it required two years of paperwork before we got the notice to proceed and go out to bid. So, it took us two years of filing papers and getting approved and everything else, until we could go out to bid and start this project. Hudson Street, Penn Dot Project. We have six utility poles that we have to remove here before March thirtieth of next year. We had submitted all our plans, uh, to Penn Dot. Also, we had to make a complete material list of everything that is gonna be used to temporarily move the poles over to one side, and we're only moving three of the six for our use over to one side. And then, uh, we also had to make a material list to put the poles back, and that's all six of them, and all the material list required for that, including their costs. This was all submitted to Penn Dot. We've been waiting for them to get back to us with the contract. Uh, the way this worked on their utility relocation is that the borough will get paid seventy-five percent, you know, of the work. And we have to sign the contract, which we have not received yet. Once we have the contract signed, and it goes back to Penn Dot, we're hoping that within the next few weeks that we would get the notice to proceed. My, my object of this whole thing was to have it done before Thanksgiving, but at this rate, uh, it's not looking good, and I didn't wanna have to go through and make all these moves, you know, in the dead of winter, because you have a March thirtieth deadline. Now, that, that's just our aspect of it. Now, there's Verizon, uh, on that, those poles, as well as Breeze Line. So, they also have to wait and, on, on their contract, you know, to move forward also. The project is supposed to start sometime in May. Uh, I'm sorry, March of next year. But it's all predicated on the contractor who's doing the job, getting all the necessary permits. So, hopefully, uh, we'll see this, and again, we just right now have to move three poles to service our customers, that they have their power, until Verizon gets off of our other poles and we can remove them before March. The trail update, this is Diego Street down to the Quake Cake. This is our trail, this trail, the trail itself has been completed in both aspects, as you will see. Uh, the trail is complete. We are writing a grant right now to do the bridges. The bridges have been engineered, they're ready to, we give the word to the manufacturer, and they could build them. But right now, we, we had just submitted a grant, uh, to have that done. And here, same, the, uh, Diego Street to Quake Cake, another shot of the trail, the one on the left, indicates down where the junction is, where the bridge would start by those hay bales. Now, this is the tree clearing from the trailhead down by the museum, down to where the first bridge would go, it's approximately, uh, just a little over nine hundred feet. The trees have been cleared out in these, uh, photographs. There's the finished product. It's a, it's a beautiful trail, uh, going down to, to, actually, down to Diego Street. Again, just waiting on the, uh, the two bridges that would have to go in. And here are some, some other shots. And the four visitors that greeted us as we were going down. The contractors did an excellent job on, on, on doing this trail, and, uh, we hope that next year we'll be able to get the bridges in. The end. Oh. Briar Lane, uh, you may have heard some comments in regards to the water quality there. What we, we did, we tried blowing it off, you know, opening up a hydrant and also a blow-off, uh, to clear the sediment out of the pipes. Initially, that didn't work, so what we attempted to do is we put in a valve on Lauterburn Avenue, hoping that by shutting that valve, naturally, it would kill the water supply to Lauterburn, but it would send it up Rebar Street and through Briar Lane, and then down Rose Alley to flush it out. And, uh, so far, it has worked. But, again, we're, we're just waiting to see, we believe that somewhere on, uh, Rebar Street, there is a valve that is either half-closed or closed. And that's what we're looking for right now, just to make sure that we can expediently get this water flushed, you know, better. But, again, uh, it was last Wednesday, I believe that we had gone in, inserted the valve, closed the valve, and, uh, it was kind of really dirty the next day, but then, uh, it cleared up very well, and it's still clear, you know, for the people there, so. We're not finished with it, we're doing this to make sure that it does, that they have a lasting effect there.
Anybody have any questions? Good job. Next item of business. Approval for sale of items for municipal and other items. Everybody saw what's gonna go up for sale on municipal? Anybody have any questions? Okay, we need a motion there?
I make a motion, we approve the sale of the items for municipal.
Uh, first by Joe Cybert, need a second?
I'll second then.
Second by Jeff Walters, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, highest have it.
Have we been selling it so far? Has it been going?
Some of it has, it's, some of it, we, we still have some left from the last round that will be putting on.
Is it free to advertise?
Uh, municipal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I was gonna say, you know, how long do we leave it on, and then...
Oh, no, no, it's not a matter, we give it a cycle, you know, you have three weeks, or whatever, a month, to bid on it, and then at the end of that cycle, the bids come in, and they're awarded, and then you can run it again as many times as you want, you know.
Okay, the next item of business.
Nora, excuse me, you need a second motion for the...
Oh. Okay, need a second?
I thought Jeff said...
No, no.
Oh, Jeff?
No, no, we need a, a second motion, because the, uh, the tasers that are on your last page of these cannot be sold on municipal, we just need authorization to sell them, and, uh, chief...
Yeah, they can't go to the public, so they have to go to, they have like private companies out there that, uh, that buy, buy and back off, so, you know, Marco was trying to sell them for some time now, but I think, I don't know if you guys have it listed on there or not, so it's like a TriStar or something like that.
Are they just have a...
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have all created, we have been using those tasers for probably about a year now, so, they're just sitting.
Want me to change my motion?
No, no.
No, just do a second one.
You need a separate one.
Oh, a separate, okay, it's not listed on there.
I'll make a motion that we advertise to sell the, uh, the taser guns.
Okay, motion made by Jeff Miller, need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Teresa DeAndrea, roll call.
Joseph Cybert?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, the next item of business, approval for loan modification agreement to extend the line of credit.
This is the, uh, the line of credit we have, uh, it's a hundred thousand dollar, um, note on there, and that was for the additional cost to paint the tank to, the water tank. We had used our COVID money, and then, in order to meet the rest of the demands, we had a hundred thousand dollar note.
And since we don't have a hundred thousand dollars sitting around...
We'll extend it.
Any questions? Okay, we need a motion for approval for a loan modification agreement.
I'll make a motion for approval for the loan modification agreement to extend the line of credit.
Okay, we have a first by Joe Cybert?
I'll second it.
Second by Vincent Cutterford, roll call.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Joseph Cybert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Next item of business, appoint a negotiating committee for the PBEW.
You could do this in executive session too, I mean, you'd have to come out of executive session to appoint him, but it deals with personnel, so if you wish to discuss in executive session, you could.
It's council's pleasure. Discuss it in executive session.
Does anybody, does anybody oppose the current, the, the committee that, that was in place for the initial meeting?
I don't have a problem.
I bet you know.
I knew you were gonna pick that one.
Uh, mayor, the mayor, myself, Harold, Tracy, and, uh, Mr. Nava.
I'm totally with that.
I'm sure you are. I, I don't know, I don't, if that, if nobody has, is opposed to it, then I, we could probably just clean it up now, if we have to make a motion anyway.
If nobody opposes to it, we need a motion.
You're all too smart to...
Yeah, your motion.
The motion has to say who's going to be on it.
Right.
Well, yeah, Mike, if you wanna make the motion, keep the same committee that we had at the initial meeting?
But it should, it should say who they are, because it should be in the minutes, who's, who the members are.
He just said it, though. And that's fine, you can't...
I didn't hear all of that, so...
Ah, okay, so it's Harold, Tracy, me, Mike, and the mayor.
Okay.
Okay, we have a first by Mike Belizia, need a sec?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe Cybert, roll call.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Joseph Cybert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Anonymous.
Okay, the next item of business, we will be discussing in our executive session, and if there's any decision, we'll vote on it after the executive session.
Need a motion to go in executive?
That'll be in there too.
Okay, we'll need a motion to go in executive session.
Nora, you missed one. You missed about the Butler properties.
Right.
That's what, that's what's gonna be part of the executive.
That's part of the executive.
Need a motion to go in executive session?
For personnel and real estate.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session for personnel and real estate.
I'll second it, yeah.
Uh, first by Vincent Cutterford, second by Mike Belizia, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, highest have it.
Are you gonna have John stand?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So, look at two people back in? Three people?
Teresa, I'm gonna take you home. I'm taking you home. I'm gonna take you home, okay?
To John and Daisy, huh?
To the home?
His bed closet's staying here.
But, we're hiding under the chair, I'll...
Jim's mic.
Do we have to make a motion to table the...
Teresa's mic.
Butler thing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Somebody else can have that one.
Oh, where's John and Daisy?
I guess we'd let them know.
Oh, so they didn't stay?
No, I'll, I'll text them.
Okay.
I told them to stay out.
It's got tabled.
I told them to stay out there.
Oh, okay.
Any listen, we didn't like them? Any listen to you?
Yeah, they did, they're staying out there.
Okay, the next order of business is, uh, discussion motion regarding Butler Point Properties.
I can make a motion that we table that discussion until next meeting, pending further information.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first by Mike Belizia, second by Joe Cybert, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, highest have it. Last order of business, discussion of possible action on pension, on letting John from Mansion and Harold Putliner into the pension.
I make a motion to allow Harold Putliner and John from Mansion into the pension plan conditional upon the borough and employees completing all requirements provided by the actuaries.
Okay, we have a first?
I'll second it.
By Vincent Cutterford, second by Joe Cybert, roll call.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Harold Fair, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't change him on here, sorry about that. Uh, Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Joseph Cybert? And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
I missed you.
Need a motion for German?
I make a motion, we turn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, highest have it.